Peter Pulaski is also interested in continuing to serve. And as a PGA golf professional, he provides a vital role to the Short Beach Commission. I have also discussed with the Short Beach Commissioners, and they would like to see a Christopher Murphy brought on in place of Ray Barry, who is departing. So some of the names that I've talked about with my commission members are different than those that have been put forward here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there other discussion?
Point of clarification. So we'll go to the town attorney? Or is there any... Is there anything to prevent us from adding additional people to a commission or adding additional names? What stops us from people who want to volunteer?
The Short Beach Commission is set up by ordinance, so it probably has a membership. We're going to take a look at that right now.
Do we need that question? Mr. Llewellyn?
Madam Chair, as we have three people put forth and also have other people in play, do you want to set up a means by which individual councilpersons can decide which three people they're going to vote for?
Right now, there are only three people in nomination. There was a motion, and then there was a second to that. So we need to vote on those three.
I'm going to make a nomination to add as nominees to the Short Beach Commission the names of Christopher Murphy and Peter Pulaski.
I don't think you can do that currently, because we need to vote on this motion first. Okay? Okay, let me call the question. All in favor of appointing Patricia Clark Sperling, Scott Barksdale, and David Panzak to the Short Beach Commission to serve in the terms that are expired?
Call for a roll call vote.
Say, you can say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, now roll call vote. Mr. Duma?
No.
Yes.
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 No.
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 Yes.
And the chair votes yes. These three people are now appointed to the Short Beach Commission. Pass is six to four.
Madam Chairman, before you leave this, just an answer to Councilman Manis's question. The ordinance calls for seven members. So if you wanted to increase that, it would require, you know, amendment of the ordinance.
How do we do that? Counselor, seven?
Like any other ordinance, somebody submits an ordinance that now calls for nine members or whatever, and it's sent to ordinance committee, you talk about it, and ultimately the council votes on it. If it passes, then two more members are appointed.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 7.5.6 Disability Review Board. Mr. Gresko?
Madam Chair, I move to take the item off the table.
Thank you. Is there a second for taking that item off the table?
I second.
Okay, then all in favor of taking the item off the table?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gresko?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that Jancy Pusmarcone fill the expired term and be hereby appointed a member of the Disability Review Board, replacing Kurt Alberg.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
I second it, Harden.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Now, discussion?
I have some discussion. This is actually one of the most important boards that we vote on. It has real authority in terms of who receives a pension and who doesn't. It's a board that requires some expertise to be effective. In fact, we're required to have a medical doctor on the board. I don't... I'm familiar with his name. I understand she's a member of the DTC and the wife of the Democratic registrar. I don't know what her qualifications are in terms of being on the Disability Review Board. She may have excellent qualifications.
Mr. Gresko?
I don't know what they are.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's hard for us to vote on such an important board that can, quite frankly, have the town... Make a decision that could have the town liable for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in an individual case, and millions of dollars over the course of the term of a member.
Good, thank you, Mr. Gresko.
Without knowing what... I'm not done.
Yeah, but it seems like you're asking for her qualifications. And I'm sorry, Mr. Duma, and I think that Mr. Gresko wants to answer your questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
She is in charge of the surgical ICU unit at Bridgeport Hospital.
And I believe she teaches nursing, or currently or has taught nursing at Yale University. Mr. Harden?
And I support her. She's, again, she is the head nurse for the medical ICU unit, which is a very critical unit, and she has a host of experience. And it takes experience to run a critical floor and have expertise in teaching at the School of Nursing for Bridgeport and Yale.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more discussion, all in favor of appointing Ms. Marcone to the Disability Review Board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Okay, Mr. Duma?
No.
Yes.
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 Pass.
No.
Ms. Manis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes six to two.
Um, I think...
I'm sorry, seven...
Ms. Antezzo never...
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Antezzo?
I pass.
But you need to vote. You're present here, you need to vote.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven to two. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill. Okay, is there a nomination for that?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Chase? Oh, I'm sorry, it's still on the table.
It's on the table.
Madam Chairman, I was going to make a motion to remove it from the table.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of removing this from the table?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we replace the former member of the commission, former councilman Tony Ross, with Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a second?
I appoint information, Mr. Kennedy needs a first name.
Oh, Richard Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, I'd like to... Is a Vietnam veteran, very active with the local VFW, and has been a volunteer on Academy Hill, and I think deserves membership on the commission.
Thank you. There's a second to this?
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Manis, seconded.
I have discussion.
Discussion?
I just wanted to point out Billy Anthony Ross and his contributions to Stratford, and what a tremendous man he was and continues to be. He lives on. And the work that we do here is truly amazing, and I hope our town... Mayor Harkins, I'm talking to you. Can find some way to honor his memory and all of the contributions that he gave to our town. So if there's something we can do or you can think of to commemorate Mr. Ross, I know the constituents would really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of appointing Richard Kennedy to the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill, vote, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes nine to zero. The next two, I'd like to leave on the table, if that's okay, unless somebody wants to take... Needs to take them off. Let's move on to section eight ordinance.
I have a question on this.
Yeah?
On this Economic Development Commission, isn't the mayor that makes these appointments? Can we get this down once and for all?
Let me explain. There are two different economic development commissions. One is the councils, and one used to be called the Economic and Community Development Commission, the name of... And that was the mayor's. The name of that was changed to Economic Development Commission with the Community Development Subcommittee. It's very confusing.
I'd like to move to skip this.
I have a point, I have a question.
Um, yes, Ms. Antezzo?
Is this the committee or its subcommittee that handles the block grants?
No, that would be the mayor's. In the mayor's Economic Development Commission, that... There is a subcommittee there that handles the block grants.
Okay, thank you.
I think the question in the future, Mr. Chase, would be, does the council ever want to revive its Economic Development Commission, which comes out of ordinances?
Okay, I move we keep this on the table.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for that lengthy explanation. It took a lot of legal research to get us there. Okay, ordinances.
Oh, we forgot one.
Yeah, I had said if we can keep that one on the table, too.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to 8.1.1, ordinance.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move to do a first reading, correct, of this ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016, and ending July 30th, 2017, appropriating the sum of $216,51,861, in accordance therewithin and sponsored by the town council. I'm going to stop reading because I might get sick, it's a lot of money, and I think it's all here. So I'd like to move that to ordinance.
So you're moving to waive the first reading of this, right?
I'd like to move to waive it because we all have copies.
Right. And so, okay, and this is to... The resolution... Your resolution is that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, there's a second to that? Okay, all, discussion?
Second. I just want to make a comment for whatever public is still here. This is the first time that we're putting it here just the way that we were handed the budget. It will be at the ordinance committee meeting, which will be toward the end of the month, I think the last Monday, when changes will be made. But this is the procedure. We get it to the ordinance committee, then the ordinance committee, what comes out of that goes to the council for next month. That's the way it goes. Step one, two, three. And this is step one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of moving this to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Of... All in favor of the resolution?
To dispense the first reading.
To dispense the first reading and of the resolution as written? Say aye?
No.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, the motion passes nine to zero. Okay, 8.1.2.
Do we have to make a motion to move it to ordinance now? Because we dispensed with the first reading, do we have to do another motion to move to ordinance, or does that do it automatically?
That's the resolution.
That's it, right?
That's it.
Okay, just asking, it's getting late.
It was referred to the ordinance committee.
Excuse me.
Yes.
The point of information, you said resolution. The first thing we did was the ordinance, not a resolution.
The resolution, if you go to page eight?
Page eight?
The resolution, page eight of your agenda? The resolution is to refer it to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Why does it say resolution?
It says resolved. That paragraph starts...
That's not...
It's a resolution.
That doesn't make it a resolution.
Mr. Gresko? The council is resolving to move the ordinance to ordinance committee. That's all there is.
Okay, 8.1.2.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
I'd like to move, resolve, that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. Second.
And Mr. Gresko seconds? Okay?
Madam Chairman?
Discussion?
I will vote to move this to ordinance. I want the record to note that my vote does not mean that I in any way support a 39.39 mil increase.
Same here.
Second.
I...
Okay.
I repeat, I join in Mr. Chase and his opposition to the mil rate increase.
Moving right along.
Let... And I do also.
Yeah, definitely.
It is not an endorsement of a mil rate of 39.39. And just so the public can understand what happened here with this ordinance... With this ordinance, it's different than what was published in the budget book. And the reason for that is that the state has capped vehicle taxes, the mil rate for vehicles, to 32. So now there are two different mil rates, one for vehicles, one for property. So that's why there was... That's what we see in front of us.
Madam Chair?
Just for clarification, Madam Chairman, what that in effect means is your tax, your property tax on your automobiles is next year is going to go down.
Down. In a big way. I also wanted to make sure, and I don't... Financial Director's away, but as you check with her, to make sure that in the future we don't look to raise our property taxes to make up for this, that we are getting a reimbursement from the state for this money.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor of moving this to... Of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, the 8.1.3, this has to do with the capital improvement program.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
Resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Manis seconds? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Now, we're at 8.1.4, which is a bonding ordinance. Okay, and if you go to page... Page 14, you will see the resolution.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Chase?
Resolve, I move resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes eight to one, unless we need a roll call vote? Nope, okay, motion passes eight to one. Okay, 8.1.5, the resolution is published on page 15 of the agenda.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
I move resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as the first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gresko seconds? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I just had a question, quick. We're going to discuss what's proposed in this, correct, in ordinance?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. In no way does my vote to send this to ordinance refer to any of this.
No, 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 no. Don't you worry.
Wait, what?
You think this meeting is long?
All right.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes eight to one.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Resolve that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Manis seconds? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes eight to one. 8.1.7, since you are the sole sponsor of this, Mr. Dumas, I will let you take care of this. This is an ordinance amending chapter 14 of the Code of the Town of Stratford, Connecticut, to require competitive bidding for professional services and require cost control mechanisms for contracts for legal services.
Ms. Madam Chair, I move that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance 16-13B and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, and there's a second to that. For this, I'd like to do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Young.
Uh, no.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Manis?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gresko?
No.
Mr. Harden?
I'll pass.
Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Just to be clear, this is where you can't vote? You can't take funds? I just want to be clear about which one we voted on.
No, this is a totally different one. If you want to take a minute, this is to require competitive bidding for legal services, and it's followed by another ordinance on the legal department.
Yes, yes. Professional services.
Mr. Kadim votes yes.
Yes.
Mr. Duma votes yes. The chair votes no. It's... Who... Mr. Harden?
No.
Okay. The vote is five to four. Is that... That's not enough to move it to ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the motion fails. Okay, 8.1.8, again, this is sponsored by Mr. Duma, an ordinance amending chapter 22 of the Code of the Town of Stratford, Connecticut, to establish an in-house legal department. Mr. Duma?
A point of clarification, I offered to co-sponsor this with Mr. Duma as well.
Okay.
If you'll have me.
Madam Chair, I move that the first reading of the above entitled ordinance be and is hereby dispensed with as copies thereof have been previously furnished to each member of the town council, and that the same be adopted as a first reading and referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Duma, how do you vote on this? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Mr. Young seconds? Okay, discussion? Ms. Manis?
I'd like a point of clarification. If there was... I heard that there was some kind of information from the town attorney regarding this ordinance? Was this the one?
Yes.
Can you share it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to withhold, but thank you.
I'm finding out things just like you, man.
Right, ask the second question. Yeah, we were asked to look at this. The provision to make the town attorney a full-time employee of the town would require change to section 3.1.1 of the town charter. So under Connecticut general statutes, section 7-188, there's a procedure to amend the charter, which we'd have to follow. You can't do it by ordinance.
I have a question.
That would lead to charter revision.
Okay, thank you. That clarification.
I have a question for the town attorney. Why exactly would that require that section to be amended?
Because there's no provision for a full-time attorney in the charter. It just says you have to be a member of the bar in Connecticut and have five years' experience.
Can you tell me in the charter where it says there's a provision in the... Can you tell me where in the charter there's a provision for a full-time finance director?
Well, the issue I looked at was for the attorney, and there's no provision for a full-time attorney. And further, in 2008, the charter revision committee took up the same issue and rejected it. So if we're going to change charter to add full-time attorney, that would be what would be required.
Yeah, but my question is, does the charter require that we have a full-time finance director?
I don't know.
Okay.
I guess it doesn't if you say...
Mr... Ms. Manis?
Going over the budget that we currently have, and spending a lot of time with it, looking at Mr. Duma, the proposed ordinance, and looking at the Board of Education's budget, and I know it's apples to oranges a little bit, but the amount of money saved is equal to, put it in layman's terms, math coaches. It's equal to the expenditure of the math coaches. And so, when you look at creating an in-house legal department, you do see where all the things that the mayor's speaking about, we benefit from. So I think that the money is there if we choose to make that decision with regards to education. We can actually return the $500,000, pretty much, close to it, that the mayor withdrew from that budget by just doing this.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Mr. Duma?
Yes, if the... Any indication on the last proposed ordinance is the case, because typically it's very rare for an ordinance to be voted down on a first reading. It seems that there's a partisan move by members of the Democratic Party, not all members of the Democratic Party, to protect the business interest of the current town attorney's firm, where the... One of the partners there is a former member of the Democratic Town Committee. I think that this is quite frankly disgusting, that the fact that members of... Certain members of the Democratic Caucus are opposed to making our selection of town attorneys, both in-house and outside counsel, less open, that they avoid these things that are cost-saving measures, and are continuing the patronage that the town attorney's department represents. I'm very disappointed in those members of the Democratic Caucus. And quite frankly, I've discussed that potentiality, because I understood that the council chair, when she ran for mayor, received thousands of dollars of donations from the town attorney's firm. In anticipation of this, I've already made arrangements to eventually seek to have these provisions as referendums at one point, either or an initiative. So that's something that we can expect down the road, that the Democrat... Certain members, not all members of the Democratic Caucus, is sticking with the status quo and the patronage that is the town attorney's office, that this is something that I think the voters should get a chance to decide on, because this is something I think the voters would probably think is a good idea.
Okay. And Mr. Florck would like to be recognized. One sec.
Yes, Madam Chairman. The problem with this proposed ordinance is, as Attorney Hodgson said, there's currently nothing in the town charter requiring that the town attorney or any of the assistants be full-time employees of the town. The charter, as presently constituted, allows the mayor to choose whomever he wants or she wants as town attorney, provided that that person has five years' experience. What this ordinance is attempting to do is to change the charter by an ordinance, by restricting the mayor's choice to someone who can occupy that office as a full-time employee. Now, this council has the right to set compensation and salary schedules for the legal town attorney's office. However, and you could, if you wanted to, you could take it from its present status as an hourly rate to a salaried position with benefits. You can do that. But what you can't do is require that the person who fills that office be a full-time town employee without any other legal practice or legal areas whatsoever. That clearly, clearly violates the charter.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Manis?
I think I understood you saying like they can't take any outside work, basically, is what you're saying? Like, that's not okay?
That's what this ordinance says. It attempts to make that person whom the mayor chooses to occupy that position a full-time employee and prohibits any outside employment.
Well, I was just going to speak in, in support of the mayor and his position, and it's lonely where you are. You're at the top, it's lonely. There's not a lot of support there, right? You've got all these people around you, but don't you need somebody committed? Wouldn't you want somebody who doesn't have any outside, you know, special interests around you? Isn't that, that's politics, but that's not governance. Like, this would be the person that you look to for legal advice. So, to me, I know the law is what you're saying, it doesn't make sense, but to me, just as a person, I would want to know that the person I'm turning to for legal advice isn't getting ready to fund the next mayoral for somebody, or isn't getting ready to, you know, run off on their own and have four developments under, you know, in lawsuits. Do you know what I'm saying? It's, it's, it's just not adding up to me, and I don't have enough legal background to know, but I would think they have to be committed to our town and our mayor, and I think we've seen it time and time again, maybe not with these guys, but special interests keep playing a role here, and it all, all roads seem to lean back to attorneys.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor would like to speak.
I mean, you can debate whether the system can be modified or not. The current system works out pretty well. I mean, my first town attorney was a Democrat. I don't think that's ever been done before in the history of this town where a Republican actually appointed a Democrat, and that did because Tim Bishop was involved in this community a lot. He was, he contributed his time, but he was, and he was a smart, good attorney. That's why I appointed him. And we brought in other attorneys that had equal abilities and areas of expertise, and that's, that's what we do. Attorney Hodgson now works for Birch and Moses, and, you know, we use people that are competent in their field of expertise, and we're comfortable with that. Do we make changes on occasion? Yes. And the other thing is, if you, even if you have a full-time attorney, they're still going to have their outs, they're still going to have to hire outside help, whether it's for tax appeal, work up in New Britain, or if they have a federal court case in New Haven, they can't do it all, because certain attorneys have specialties in areas of their expertise, whether it's labor, litigation, sort of real estate. So, even though you think you're saving some money on having a full-time attorney, they still have to outsource other legal work. That's the reality of it. So, they would be managing it. And that's what we do right now. We feel as though we, we are doing well with our town attorney's office. It's always an area of interest by everybody, and one of the reasons why the numbers change at the department so much is because settlements are included in our budget. And depending on the settlements that you have in a year, that can dramatically affect your budget.
Okay. Mr. Kadim wanted to speak first.
You know, when you look at the breakdown, when you read this, and I understand where Councilman Duma's coming from, a lot of expenditures are being spent, and I understand trying to put a cap on that. So, maybe it should be something put in place where we can find a medium where you're not spending so much in legal fees, because to see a whole lot of things come through this building. You know, people complain about that suing for this, suing for that, and, you know, and it's very hard to have one lawyer, this is my overview, can handle all those expertise. So, I understand that. But it also should be a situation where it's so many, I've seen some of the paperwork, there's so many things they charge you for, you gotta kind of, I understand where he's coming from. You have to put a line where we stop spending so much on just one, one thing. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duma?
I have two points to make. One, the advice that we're receiving from our town attorney and our assistant town attorneys here, important qualification here, is they have a conflict of interest in giving this advice, because it's directly impacting them. I will say that I do have a great deal of respect for each of the attorneys here, and, you know, quite frankly, that I think Attorney Hodgson is a much more able attorney than his predecessor, and I have a lot of respect for, for their firm in terms of the work they do. But that, quite frankly, you're not getting an unbiased opinion from them. And I'm not saying they have a conflict of interest in terms of the rules of professional responsibility, if that's what they were going to address, but in terms of what a layman understands that to be. The second point is, a number of municipalities do this, including Stanford, Hartford, New Haven, and the charter language in New Haven is, is strikingly similar to our charter language. Quite frankly, the advice they're giving on the charter is, is not correct, and quite, and we're used to getting incorrect advice from our town attorneys. And I'd be happy to, you know, as this is something that we can debate as it moves forward in the process, if it does, I'd be happy to find a, provide a very detailed memorandum on that, because I've worked for some of these communities, I know what their charter says, and, you know, quite frankly, it is permissible. Whether it's the right decision from a policy standpoint, that's something we should address in ordinance as it's customarily going, is customarily done. The fact is, other places do that. It saves a lot of money. It doesn't mean that we can't have any outside counsel. The resolution that was just, the ordinance that was just wrote it down was to address other outside counsel. It just means that the primary counsel would be in-house to save a lot of money and to avoid a lot of potential conflicts.
Okay, thank you.
If I could respond to the conflict of interest.
Yes, Mr. Hodgson.
Comment by the councilman. If I thought I had a conflict, I wouldn't have answered the question, because I thought it was so obvious that it would require an amendment to the charter, and then further, the general statutes are very clear as to how the charter is to be amended.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move the question.
Yes, thank you, me too. Okay. All in favor of moving this, of the resolution that was read, indicate aye?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
No.
Now, okay, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Duma, you vote aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Restructured the question, can I say it again?
Okay. If you vote yes, then you are having this ordinance, this proposed ordinance moved to the ordinance committee. If you vote no, then it will not be moved to the ordinance committee, and that will be the end of it. Okay? So, Mr. Duma voted.
Yes.
Voted yes to move it to the ordinance committee.
Yes, move it to the ordinance.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to pass.
You're passing? Mr. Gresko?
Yes.
You're voting yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I pass.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, he votes yes. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes. Okay, so the pass is nine to zero. Okay, the next resolutions have to do with, these are booked, we can ask the Assistant Finance Director.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
The resolution is found 8.2 on the addendum to the agenda.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that it is cognizant of the Town of Stratford's grant application and contract with the National Association of County and City Health Officials, the amount of $15,000, to implement and build the capacity of the Stratford-Trumbull-Monroe Medical Reserve Corps, and fund emergency preparedness presentations to strengthen community preparedness and resiliency.
Second.
Further resolved that it hereby authorizes, directs, and empowers the mayor or his designee to execute and deliver such application in the name, and on behalf of the Town of Stratford, any and all applications and/or agreements, including amendments to or rescission of such agreement, and any and all related documents necessary to apply for and obtain funding from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, MRC Grant Program, to build the capacity of the Stratford-Trumbull-Monroe Medical Reserve.
Okay, thank.
I would move the resolution and waive the first reading. I'm sorry, this is.
No, 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 this is just a resolution.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Okay. Okay, the motion is seconded by Ms. Manis. Discussion of accepting this grant essentially? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, now let's go to 8.2.1, Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of 2011 Arrears Tax Accounts to the Tax Suspense Account Pending Further Action.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, resolve, the Town Council of, the Town of Stratford authorizes the tax collector to transfer to the tax suspension, suspension account totaling $494,987,35, for the 2011 grant list amount shown below. Grant list year 2011 type motor vehicle, $253,222,10. Grand year two, grand list year 2011 supplemental motor vehicle, $43,066,85. Grant list year 2011 personal property, $198,698,40. Total, $494,987,35.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gresko. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Passes nine to zero. Yes, Mr. Chase?
Madam Chairman?
I don't think we're going to need to go through all the amounts, but go ahead.
Alrighty, well, this one, I'll have some questions. Resolve, the Town Council of the Town of Stratford authorizes the tax collector to transfer to the tax suspension account totaling $18,523 for the grand list years and amounts shown below. The grand year list starting in 1998 through 2013.
Wait, do you want a second for that first?
Second.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If there's someone from the administration that can answer my question?
First, we need a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Manis. Okay, now discussion. Okay, Mr. Chase, your question?
Yeah, I am sorry to keep you here so late. I know you wanted to get out of here, but how come we haven't done this sooner? Why are we going back? I mean, this is, some of this is, what, almost 10 years old?
Right. These are town-owned properties, so for accounting purpose, we have to move them out of the delinquent taxes.
Right. So, they became town-owned properties, as an example, the one in 1998, was that a town-owned property, or?
Right, they were delinquent from a long, for a long period of time, so, when they became town-owned property, I think within a few years ago.
Uh-huh.
So, they were still on the list. We need to move them out to a suspense list.
Okay, all right.
I have a question also, regarding the commercial sewer. When you move it to a tax suspense account, what happens?
Well, they come out of the receivable. Right now, they're in our financial as accounts receivable, but they are our own town-owned property, so we shouldn't be paying for our own taxes, sewer, commercial.
Does this ever get collected?
No. They're delinquent, but with the town, through the foreclosure proper, foreclosed process, they became the town-owned, like, buildings and, yeah, mostly their buildings.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dumas?
Madam Chair, through the chair, I have a question. This says for sewer tax, there actually isn't a sewer tax, is there's a sewer user fee, correct?
Sewer user fee, correct.
Now, is, are these being, these arrears, are they being commingled in a arrears account with tax revenue?
No, no.
So, it's a separate?
Correct.
Sewer use account?
Correct.
That would be on the WPCA's books and not on the town's books?
Correct. It's on the WPCA fund.
And would it be, and made through the chair to the town attorneys, would it be more appropriate for this resolution to be made by the WPCA? As this is, the WPCA's sewer use fees, it's a separate legal entity, and quite frankly, I don't think the town council actually has the authority to do this, the WPCA does.
Good question.
We'd have to look at that. I really don't have an opinion on that tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was taking a look. Yes, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, but the, the finance department handles the, the town's, the finances, the reporting of them, the, the record-keeping, rather.
Sewer fees.
Of the sewer fees. You may, you might make a point that, yeah, maybe this should have gone to the WPCA, but to move this along so that they can straighten their books, I would move, we pass this and get it, get it over.
Okay. Let me call a question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes eight to one. Okay, the 8.2.3, Resolution Authorizing the Finance Director to Enter Into an Agreement Between the Town of Stratford and RSM US LLP for Auditing Service.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Manis?
I resolve that the Finance Director is hereby authorized to enter an agreement with RSM US LLP for auditing services for the fiscal year ending 30 June 30, 2016.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question. Was this put out to bid?
Yes, three years ago. They're, they're the same auditing firm as last year that we had. They were called McGladrey and Pullen. They just changed their name to RSM US, and we have a three-year agreement with them, and this will be the third year.
And were they the lowest qualified bidder?
Um, I have to go look at the, I don't think we do with that one.
So, let, let me just be clear, this is the third year of a three-year agreement?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Manis?
Mr. Dumas, point, I don't know how this works in other departments, but I know with the WPCA, how much it costs was, was not disclosed to us during the interview process for an RFP. It was after the one, the person is selected, that you learn how much the cost is. I don't know if that runs in the finance department as well with things like that, but it seems to be the, the way things go. I see the mayor shaking his head, so I'm wondering, you pick the best person, and then you find out how much it's going to cost you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. If it's a three-year contract, they don't need to go out to bid, you're just finishing up the last, the last part of the contract, right?
Correct.
All right, so, so there's no reason to even go through this. Is this his or not?
It's formality for.
Oh, formality, okay.
Yeah.
So, then next, then the next time, that we'll, we'll put it out to bid, because, like you said, it was a three-year thing, so we just finish this up and move on to the next people, right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
Okay, the motion to select the town's auditor passes eight to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Resolution 2016 America, the Beautiful Tree Planting Grant. Mr. Gresko?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Concerning the resolution of the 2016 America, the Beautiful Tree Planting Grant, I'd like it to be resolved by the Town Council, that this is cognizant of the town contract with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for funds in the amount of $3,000 to support tree planting in Stratford, and that it hereby authorizes, directs, and empowers John A. Harkins, mayor, or his designee to execute such contract with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to provide such additional information and to execute such other contracts and documents as may be necessary under this program.
Second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion made in the second by Ms. Manis. Discussion?
Yes.
I have, I'd like to know.
I'm sorry, Ms. Manis had the floor.
I gotta go first.
Okay.
You're talking about, you're talking about planting trees.
These are planting, not.
Yeah, I know. And trees, trees are funny things up by where I live. They're eating us. The forest is eating us up in 10, so I'm asking you to make sure that when we plant these trees, that they're trees that are sustainable, that Stratford can have, because somebody might not know this, but when Stratford's developments were done up in the North End, they planted berry trees up there, and they ruined people's homes. So, it's very important, the trees that we select, I'd suggest that you speak with people on the beautification committee, because they know things with regards to this, and we get proper guidance with the trees that we plant, not, you know, oak and maple on bedrock. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I would suggest that maybe Ms. Manis have, invite the tree warder, Chad Esposito, to speak to her beautification committee. He is quite knowledgeable, and I believe fully understands the issue with certain kinds of trees that should be planted or shouldn't be planted.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Manis?
My observation in looking at the budget is, there is $100,000 set aside for cutting down trees, and another $50,000 for getting rid of stumps. Nowhere in our budget is there anything that says we're going to plant trees. And as a person that lives at the green, I will acknowledge that 100-year-old trees should be removed, but somebody should, the town should be replacing them. There are some blocks that have absolutely no trees, and it's not a good thing for a neighborhood, both environmentally and aesthetically.
Madam Chairman?
Okay, thank you.
To answer, Ms. Antezzo, this is the reason why we're applying for this grant, so we can plant some more trees.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes nine to zero. There was one other grant that never got onto this agenda, because it was received way too late to get onto the agenda, and that was from the town attorney's office.
What? We motion to amend, so you can.
So, I need a motion to amend the agenda to?
I'd like to motion to amend the agenda to accept the grant.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to find it.
I always take other people's money.
It's in a SAE P, it's $900,000.
Do any members, as a point of information, do any members of the council, other than the chair, have paperwork on this?
It's a grant.
It was received, I don't even know what.
As a point of information, will we lose the grant if we don't vote on this, if we have, if we don't vote on it today?
I would move now, Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I would move on the grant now, particularly given the financial times of the state. It was for the Army Engine Plan for planning purposes. It's important, it's vital. It's going to help with the future of that site for redevelopment. I would suggest if it's before this evening to amend the agenda and accept the grant and move it forward with the ECD.
Is it coming from the state?
Yes.
My suggestion is you better take that money.
Um, can I ask, would anybody like to read this? It's other people's money.
Wouldn't it, while that's being read, Madam Chairman, when did you receive that email?
I received it late Friday. I didn't look at email until Saturday. By then, this office was closed. It could not get on the agenda with 24 hours' notice. It could not get on the agenda with 24 hours' notice.
That's fine. And who sent you the email?
Was that from Mr. Jackson or Mr. Hodgson?
This was from...
I don't know which... Chris, was it you or Chris?
It was Friday when I got it from Mr. Jackson.
Yeah. The deadline for getting the...
I'm not arguing deadline, Madam Chairman. All I'm suggesting that, you know, to... So we're not delaying these things in the future, that for this type of thing, for a grant that has... That is time-sensitive, that the town attorney send it to the entire council.
As a point of information also, is there any reason why we couldn't put this on the agenda for the many, many special meetings we have planned over the course of the next couple of weeks, so that people could actually have the paperwork, and we could even vote on it Thursday, for example?
You can't add to the agenda's special meetings?
You can't add to the agenda of a special meeting at the special meeting. You can reissue an amended agenda for the special meeting up to 24 hours before the meeting, unless it's an emergency meeting, in which case you're just showing up and having the emergency meeting.
Would the council prefer to do that?
Yeah.
No?
I wanna finish the agenda.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do we move the question?
I'm sorry?
Can we move the question?
Okay, let's lift the question, but we need to read the resolution first.
Okay, then, someone's gotta read it.
Okay.
'Cause I don't have it.
Oh, for the sake of ease, I'm just going to read the resolution. It's whereas pursuant to Connecticut, to sections 3276 of the Connecticut General Statutes and section 4... Never mind. Section 466(c) of the State of Connecticut, acting through the Department of Economic and Community Development, is authorized to extend financial assistance in the amount of $900,000. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Stratford execute an amended financial assistance package with DECD in the amount of $900,000 in order to facilitate environmental assessment and pre-development planning activities at the property at 550 Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Stratford Town Council that is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by CGS Section 32765 and CGS Section 466(c), that the execution of an amended financial assistance package for the state financial assistance by the Town of Stratford in an amount not to exceed $900,000 is hereby approved, and that the mayor, John Harkins, or his designees directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance. If such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Stratford. Is there a motion to be made for that?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion?
Yes, I need to... Could we get a copy of this also? You know, that email came directly to you, you said?
Did... Can the town attorney provide email... Provide that to the entire council?
Yes.
'Cause, I mean, you like to keep records of what you voted on. You don't want to...
I have a question about the...
I'm sorry?
...motion.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo?
Yes, have we just given up our firstborn?
I'm sorry? Maybe, no.
No, I'd like to copy. I have a point of information. Is this just a straight-out unilateral grant? Is there any match involved? Very little information on it, given I don't have the paperwork. It's something... It sounds good. I don't know if I'll be able to vote for it tonight, because I haven't seen the paperwork, but it does sound like a good thing, and the match was an important question, which, for those who didn't hear it, the mayor says there's no match.
Ms...
And so if this was held at a subsequent meeting later this week, I could... Would probably have an opportunity to vote yes for it, but without seeing the paperwork, without looking up the program, things like that, I'm just not in a position to vote yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, could you provide any background for us on this, or can the town attorney's office?